2018 of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin by introducing the officers for this year, 2018. And myself, I'm Dr. Michael Mead, and I am the president for this year. The vice president is Ms. Mary Petlicoff. She usually doesn't like the way I pronounce her name.[29.18][29.18](Laughter). And the secretary is Mr. Hussein Barry. And the treasurer is Ms. Fadwa Hamoud. Now, I'd like to begin by thanking Ms. Mary Lane for her service of a year and a half as the board president. She didn't have to do that. We appreciate it because now we're on a regular cycle. So, next year, Ms. Petlicoff will be the president for the year.
Is that right?
Yeah, finally.[62.35][62.35](Laughter). Finally. So, we're very grateful that Ms. Lane is still on the board because of her wisdom, because of her experience. Nobody on the board has the experience that she does. And I will be consulting her regularly, maybe to the point where she wishes I get off the phone, but I'm going to have to do that. I think that's all I wanted to say up front. Is there anything else I should be saying? No? Okay.
Maybe Happy New Year?
Ah! Happy New Year, everybody, 2018. Let's make it a great school for, a great year for our students, as we say, "Students First." Okay. So, let me kind of roll call, please, Mr. Secretary.
Roll call. Yes, sir. Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamoud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Cillian Esser.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Mary Petlicoff.
Here.
And James Thorpe.
Here.
Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Zahra Zric, Assistant Principal of Lori School, will introduce students who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Today, we brought some elementary students from Lori School. I'm Zahra Zric, and they'd like to introduce themselves and recite the pledge.
Hi, my name is Abraham Navadza, and I am from Lori School, 5th grade.
Hello, my name is Natalia Habala, and I am in 5th grade.
Hello, my name is Leanna Ajami, and I'm from Lori, and I'm in 2nd grade.
Hello, I'm Rihanna, and I'm in 2nd grade.
Hello, I'm Mustafa Harajli, and I'm in 5th grade.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Chad, guys.
Now, you are Abraham.
Uh huh.
There you are. Thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
And you are?
Natalia.
Natalia. Where are you, Natali? Oh, right here on the top. Thank you for coming. Leanna? Leanna Ajami? Thank you for coming. Nice job. Rihanna? Nice job. Thank you. And you must be Mustafa, because you're the last.
Good job.
Congratulations, and thank you.[236.62][236.62](Applause). Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items.
So, first, I just also want to say Happy New Year. I do have a New Year's resolution. No snow days, students? No.[254.23][254.23](Laughter). Of course, I'm kidding. They tried yesterday. They tried to get one, but, you know, there wasn't enough snow, but I did get the tweets and that. So, I do, again, wish everyone a Happy New Year and hope that it's a great year in 2018. So, agenda items. I have feedback. We're going to be providing a presentation as a discussion item. We have had an agenda item on boundaries in high school capacity every meeting since May. We'll do that again. And tonight, we have Mr. Mustafa and Mr. Jafar providing the feedback from community forums later in the agenda, so I wanted to make note of that. I also want to make note of the fact that we have a board resolution on the agenda tonight to oppose Senate Bill 584 and 586, the one that allows for concealed weapons. It's something that's been promoted by the Wayne County RISA and all of the organizations, superintendent's organizations, school board. And one thing I want to mention about this, too, I did have, I've had discussions on it. My understanding is, right now, it's kind of stuck in committee, and it hasn't gotten out of the, it's passed the Senate several, a couple of months ago, but it hasn't passed the House. It's stuck in committee. We've been in contact with our legislators who are against it. I also wanted to mention, you know, my student advisory council, I brought this up with them to see how they felt, and they are absolutely not in favor of it. They feel like it would be a distraction to their academics, wondering who may or may not have a weapon, whether that even be a staff member or not. And so, from our students, that was the voice I got from them, is that it would not be something, you know, favorable to them. So, again, that's on the agenda for the board's potential approval tonight.
May I make a comment about that?
Yes, you may.
Earlier, the policy committee met, and we had, because it's an open meeting, we had a visitor who pointed out that that proposed bill would allow 18-year-old students also. And, again, people were saying, "I would not be comfortable with this." So, I don't understand where it came from. I do understand all of the legislation, to the contrary, to make our schools safer. So, I hope that the Michigan Legislature, the House, is where I think it's stuck right now. I hope they will consider all of these things, and the opinion particularly of students. So, thank you, Dr. Maleko, for bringing it to us.
Thank you for the comment. I would say, too, just to kind of mention, this is not an anti or pro or anything, the Second Amendment. This is just about it being in schools and not with our students. That's what this bill would allow, so.
But what a scary thought, to have your child in a classroom, and the person next to him could be carrying a weapon that he does not know about. And, as we know, you know, we have students, and just the nature of kids sometimes, fights happen, sometimes they escalate, always bringing a gun into situation. It's just a scary thought for me, and I think many parents, educators, and community members around.
And, quite frankly, we have noticed that those people who have the right to carry a concealed weapon, they don't always know the, when they're confronted with an actual real-life scenario. It's one thing to go in there thinking, "I can be the hero," but when you're actually confronted with a situation where you have to, there's been a lot of misuse of those opportunities. I'm not saying it's always going to happen that way, but I think the thought process was, was that your schools are sitting ducks because nobody is, has a weapon, and people know that, who intend to do harm. But, quite frankly, I think it should be left to the community itself. They're taking away our ability to make these decisions for ourselves, and that's what really is disturbing to me, is at least as it stands now, we have the right to come forward and say, "Hey, look, you might be allowed to carry a concealed weapon, but we're saying not in our buildings, and we're going to be the final authority." Now, they are taking that away, and that's what we were elected to do, was to represent our community members. And if we know that that's how they want their schools to be managed, I haven't ever had anybody knocking at my door saying, "I want everybody carrying around a weapon. I'll feel safer if my kids' teachers are all armed." I find that disturbing, that they don't seem to have a good read on what the local communities would like to be able to be in charge of.
Trustee Lane.
Yeah, obviously, I concur with the comments before, and I would like to add that, you know, there's been lots of discussion in the media about this, but I would rather put my faith, there have been incidents which are, which people make mistakes, but I would rather put my faith in a good guy with a weapon, which would be the Dearborn Police. Our response times in Dearborn are enviable. I trust the Dearborn Police, the Dearborn firefighters. I trust the people that we've trained, and this is something that is of the utmost seriousness, and we need people who will respond and know what they're doing, not someone who might be well-intentioned but does not have training and doesn't know what they're doing. So, the good guy with the gun would be, good guy or girl would be the Dearborn Police Department, so that's where I think I put my faith.
Just one other point from my point of view, that is, when the police actually arrive, and there are people with guns in the building.
How do they know?
Who, how do they know who to shoot? And it can get very, very confusing, and a lot of accidents can happen. So, that's just another, another item in this. Anybody else? Okay.
I have one more agenda item. Congratulate some of our retirees. This is usually not the big season for a long, long list like we get in the summer, but I want to congratulate Denise Dahman, 25 years of service. We have Sharon Holman with seven years of service, and Denise Takwar with over 36 years of service. We appreciate their service to the district, to our students, and we congratulate them on their retirement, if we could show recognition now.
Yeah.[650.16][650.16](Applause). Anybody here? Anybody here?
No.
Okay.
But I, what I do is, I send a handwritten letter to all of our retirees congratulating them and mentioning, on behalf of the board and the district. Okay.
Non-agenda items?
Non-agenda. So, I do have a few here. Just want to mention that our chatting with the superintendent will continue. That's providing us with a lot of information, both, you know, some academic areas, feelings by parents, feelings by staff. It's a great way for me to get feedback of the people that we provide service to. The next one is at Dearborn High on January 22nd. I have staff that are going to be meeting at 3:30, parents at 6:30, and then it's kind of tied in with the PTA meeting at 7:00. Sometimes the schools like to do that because it gets a better attendance, so that's how we've operated that, so I just wanted to mention that. Also, I mentioned this the last board meeting in December, but it's been, it seems like it's been a while since we've had the break, just donations in the community. They continued to come in even during the break, and groups like, I'm just going to list the groups and just tell you. I don't have a total tally, but I have Mr. Neen Charles and Dr. Rolle Bazigates coordinating this for the district. Any of the donations to families or individuals in need, and especially during the holidays, but any time of the year, I can tell you that happens. But, the Rotary Club, Exchange Club, Goodfells, Centurions, the Dearborn Firefighters Burn Drive, the Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries, we've had Larry Johnson from the city, works with us in the city of Dearborn and Goodfells. We've had Chief Financial Credit Union, Project Panda, a Project Panda member. We've had EMO, and we've had other groups, and it's been well over 15,000, and I would tell you it's probably even more. It's just that these, this is what we know, and the groups, oh, and I don't know if I mentioned the Dearborn Police Department as well. I actually attended their event, Shopping with a Hero, where the families went to Walmart and got goods. So, all of them are really supportive of the families in need, so it really makes us proud to see the generosity of the people to help those that are in need. Sometimes it might be someone, there was a fire, or someone lost rent, or many different situations, their families are in need. So, thank all, I want to thank all those groups. So, another update, next, we have, "School is closed," so I'm happy to call snow day on the 15th.[794.82][794.82](Laughter). Or, I'm sorry, the 16th. 15th, yeah, I had their day, right. I have done that a few times, and the students said, "Okay, they want them." They got a couple, a couple of weeks ago when I was at the elementary school, Gear Park.
Don't make promises you can't keep.
So, the 15th, at 1 o'clock, we have a real Dearborn Police March. It's the Student Advisory Council for the superintendent coordinates that, along with other student groups, including the Social Justice Club and the high schools. It's all the high schools come together. Last year, it was kind of mild weather. The year before, it was utterly cold. And, again, this, this event is really just a positive event on the community. Students not only march, but they present a brief program focused on demonstrating Dearborn's rich diversity and community harmony. They want to highlight the various ways that Dearborn life aligns well with Martin Luther King Jr.'s message of peace and unity. So, we invite anyone, everyone to attend that. I have two other things. I'm going to ask Mr. Shigfree to get ready with Lori School video that we had, as we So, just, you know, those, that's an example, but there's work going on, whether it's a promotion of a ceremony, rally, getting students involved. I was at several different rallies just before the holidays with other schools, and so Lori, it's not just Lori, it's all the schools, so that's just an example of the work that's being done, positive work to support our students and doing the right thing. So, I want to thank them, and all of our schools, and the great work that everyone does. Last update I have is, some of you may have heard in the news, there was a lawsuit that was filed by the Michigan Federation of Teachers that was won for employee retirement. One of the reasons I want to bring this up is it involves specific years from like 2011, I believe, until 2013. It was like a two-plus-year gap where employees would be entitled to a reimbursement because the money was withheld. We are starting to get calls on that. We actually, on our website, those people that possibly wouldn't be currently employed with us, they actually can go on our website. We have a link where they can fill out information, and then that will make sure, you know, that everyone gets compensated properly based on the money owed. I can tell you that there has not been any specific direction yet, you know, from the state, but they're working on it with the Wayne County, and Mr. Wall and his group will be handling that. But there is a link already on the website, so as calls come in, individuals can go to our website and fill out that information. I've actually gotten several emails myself as well, so just wanted to let the employees know that. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Recognition acknowledgements. First item is empty bowls.
Good evening and Happy New Year from me, too. I'm Susan Briggs, the art resource teacher. I'd like to introduce Sarah Torres. She's an elementary teacher at a collection of schools, McDonald, Henry Ford, and William Ford. Kitty Daly is Etzel Ford art teacher. And while I speak, Dearborn High School art teacher Monica Kibitsky and her students Minar Hogege and Natalia Baji would like you to each choose a business card holder that DHS students made. Hopefully, it won't be too distracting. The Art Department's 26th Annual Empty Bowls Event was held on November 20th at Park Place Banquet Hall. Empty Bowls was started 27 years ago by Etzel Ford High School alumni and retired art teacher John Hardum and his wife Lisa Blackburn when he worked at Lassiter High School in Bloomfield Hills. It began as a service learning project to show that art can make a difference. Clay bowls were created in Mr. Hardum's ceramics class, and students' family and friends were invited to enjoy a simple meal of soup and bread and to make a suggested $5 donation. At the end of the meal, the guests were told to take home an empty bowl as a reminder of the hunger issues in our world. All of the money was donated to help feed people in the community. The next year, now-retired art teachers Wendy Sample, Audrey Wilkins started the Dearborn Schools Art Department's Empty Bowls, and we've been holding them ever since. One change is some students create objects other than bowls, such as pins, necklaces, and these business card holders. We raised $3,000 this year. Gleaners Food Bank received $1,500, which was then doubled by a matching contribution, and our local chapter of Blessings in a Backpack received the other $1,500. On behalf of the Art Department, I would like to especially thank Wendy Sample for all of her help, many other volunteers and participating art teachers and their students pitched in to make this event a huge success. Generous donations were made by Park Place, Starbucks, Blick Art Supply, The Massage Room, Motawi Tiles, and Rovin Ceramics. Star Bakery of Oak Park baked the artisan bread especially for this event. The idea of empty bowls, which began here in Michigan by a Dearborn Public Schools graduate, now has events that take place in every state in America and 22 other countries to help feed the hungry. We are really proud of the continued success of this event. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and for your continued support of the Dearborn Schools Art Department.[1263.51][1263.51](Applause).
Next item, please.
Commendations. Reading commendations tonight are Etzel Ford High School seniors Malya Prescott and Radja Bzay. Did I pronounce that right?
It's Bzay.
Bzay, okay. Thank you.
Commendations to all the people who made the first robotics, first tech challenge regional competition, a huge success and lots of fun for the nearly 500 students who participated from across southeast Michigan. The event was hosted by Dearborn Public Schools at McCullough-Unis. Also, a special thanks to event coordinator and MCU teacher Ms. Kadada Simmons, principal Shadi Farhat, and the entire McCullough-Unis staff. Commendations to Chris Kenneyberg and the district's information technology team for their outstanding work and responsiveness in developing the Forton's theme online resources. This theme improves the usability of Dearborn Public Schools' learning management system so that educators and students can focus on learning. The IT team has been attentive and willing to be creative in implementing solutions to assist the learning process. Commendations to the McCullough-Unis Robotics Team, the MCU Bots, for being awarded the Connect Award at Dearborn FTC Qualifier held at their school in December. The award is presented to the team that the judges feel most connected with their local community, first robotics and the business world. The recipient of this award is recognized for helping the community understand first the first tech challenge and aggressively seeking engineers and exploring the opportunities available in the world of engineering, science, and technology. Commendations to the following three William Ford Elementary School students who recently received awards for their writing in the 5th Annual Young Authors Festival. The third-grade first prize was Abdul-Mahim Al-Busefi for "A Time I Stood Up to Bullying." The third-grade second prize was awarded to Guram McBell for bullying, and the third-grade third prize was awarded to Mustafa Majbell for "Stand Up to a Bully." The writing was selected from approximately 150 entries from children, from children in grades 3 to 5. This year's theme was "Standing Up for What You Believe In." Entries were judged by the University of Michigan's Dearborn Preservist teachers. Commendations for Maples Elementary drummers who played on the court at Little Caesars Arena prior to the beginning of the Detroit Pistons game on December 18th. Okay. All right. Commendations to the members of the Dearborn High School Men and Women's Ensemble, which performed at the American Association Women's University Dearborn Branch Holiday Luncheon. The president of the organization, Anne Gatrow, applauded the talents of the students and their teacher Carmel Atkins, as they performed a variety of holiday carols, Broadway musical tunes, and other selections. Ms. Gatrow thanked the Dearborn Public Schools for doing such a fine job of shaping today's Commendations to the following outstanding Etzel Ford seniors for receiving the AP Scholar with a distinction award. This distinction is given to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of 3 or higher on five or more AP exams. Etzel Ford High School AP Scholars with Distinction, Abraham Alwi, Vivine Ross, and Ariana Rudolph. Commendations to the following Etzel Ford senior, Marwa Al-Badani, who earned an AP Scholar with Honor Award, which is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of 3 or higher on four or more AP exams. Commendations to the following outstanding Etzel Ford seniors for receiving the AP Scholar Award in 2017. An AP Scholar Award is granted to students who receive scores of 3 or higher or three or more AP exams. Said Akbari, Alfonso Angelus, Austin Armstrong, Joshua Bulain, Jacob Gilman, Julia Gury, Miriam Hamad, Laura Harp, Clayton Mueller, and Jennifer Tran. Commendations to the following Etzel Ford wrestlers who won their weight class at the Wayne County Tournament, William Morano and Ruth Moala. William Morano was named Tournament MVP. Congratulations to runner-up Abdallah Nasr, was runner-up and Waika, who was also competing for the tournament and finished 7th place. Commendations to the following Etzel Ford seniors, recognized as Michigan High School Athletic Association Scholar Athletes, William Morano, A.J. White, Jennifer Tran, Quinn Marion, Daniya Hamud, Abby Madron, and Hamza Azim. Commendations to the 25 Etzel Ford seniors who earned a Gold Level National Career Readiness Certificate for receiving high scores on the ACT Work Keys exam, taken last spring when the students were in 11th grade. Commendations to Forton's Slaj Shajra on being named a Division 1 All-State Defensive Back by the Detroit Free Press. Commendations to the Forton Class of 2020 and the Student Government E-Board for raising $500 and making 40 fleece blankets to send along with 40 stuffed animals and 150 holiday greeting cards to send to patients at Children Hospitals of Michigan at the Detroit Medical Center. Thank you.
Don't walk away yet. Don't walk away. You're wearing your varsity jackets, Thunderbirds varsity jackets proudly. What events do you each compete in?
Well, I play tennis, track, and I bowl now, since we have bowling. And I did volleyball.
Awesome.
I did the same as her.
Same? Oh, okay. Awesome. Good job.
And the medals. What are those? Those are. I'm fascinated. The both have such an array. These medals are from tennis tournaments that I've won. I play doubles for Etzel Ford.
Very impressive.
And same with your medals? Yeah, just league medals. Awesome. Very impressive. Wow. And they did a great job.
You did.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.[1651.92][1651.92](Applause).
I couldn't help but wince a little when they said graduating Class of 2020.
Mmm.
We're getting older.
No.
Kidding.
Okay, I'm getting older. You're staying young.
Yeah, that's right. Next item. Next item is the gavel presentation.
So, on behalf of the, I know Dr. Mead has already kind of made a commentary here, but I want to make mention on behalf of the board and the school district to thank Mary Lane for her outstanding work as board president. Your leadership is appreciated, your advice, your guidance, most importantly, your time, because it is a lot of time commitment. You're a person that believes in your convictions, and above all, you care about the best interests of our school district students, providing a high-quality education. And I was able to get you in a few of those selfies with the sign even though you resist them. I've learned a lot. You're a humble person, and that's appreciated that you just want what's best for the students. So, I've learned a lot from you through the positive, the challenges, the triumphs, and so whether it be multiple phone calls to the board president, Dr. Mead, or texts on the agenda, or meeting on the agenda, I just wanted to say thank you for your service to the district as board president. It's the second time I've been with you for a year and a half, so we've got this gavel.
You're just going to be collecting gavels. Thank you. Good, turn over the gavel to, a gavel at least to Dr. Mead.
Take your gavel with you.
How about bringing your other gavel, Dr. Mead?
All right.
She's keeping that one.
Here we go. We'll get this. Besides, here we go.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
You know, I would like to say, Dr. Maleko and fellow board members, and then to anybody who's here, it's a labor of love. I will always be grateful, I'm going to start tearing up if I say this, but I'm very grateful to Dearborn Schools for the education of my three kids. I just can't say enough about what all of the staff, from the bottom to the top, the example that you give, and a kind word from a staff member makes the students day. You all know that, that's why you're in education. It's obviously not for the money because the corporate world, you could all make a lot more money, but I'm so grateful for everything all of the teachers and the staff has done, Dr. Maleko, and I'm very grateful to my colleagues on the board for making this difficult year a good year, and I think we've accomplished things. So, I appreciate all the people who have stopped me and people who comment about how we're doing, and I would ask people to continue to do that. I appreciate the feedback, so thank you for a really good year, and I hope that the next year will be even better. So, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you for your service.
Dr. Mead, I'd like to also, first, congratulations. Congratulations. And, but to trust to Elaine, also congratulations on the gavel, and thank you really for stepping up to the plate at a time where Judge Bazey received the appointment. And this board was in need of leadership, and your leadership in specific, but more than anything, thank you for being a mentor. I was able to learn so much from you, and we really are very fortunate to have you on this board. So, hopefully now you get a little break. I know it's been a very hectic year.
It's been. It's a pretty wild year last year, so, a good year. A good year, I think. So, thanks.
Next item, please.
Board appreciation.
So, January is Board Appreciation Month, and so, right now, on behalf of our students, staff, community, I would like to thank the board trustees, all the board here for their enduring dedication to public education. As superintendent, I truly appreciate the diversity of experience. I am professional in this group of trustees brings to the table. They're very knowledgeable about the workings of our district and the latest issues impacting education. I've worked with all of the board here the past years on several important projects, including expanding our early childhood, teacher home visit programs, leadership during contract negotiations, capacity concerns, which is on the agenda tonight at our high schools, and coming up with a long-term solution. Also, just their ongoing commitment to establishing measurable goals that will steer the direction of our district for years to come, for many more years beyond just today. In addition, our board members not only oversee the twenty-one thousand students and more than twenty-seven hundred, and this keeps growing on both ends, employees and students, almost twenty-one thousand students in our district, that you're also trustees of the Henry Ford College. This means you got twice as much, twice as many duties and twice as much time as other trustees in the state, and so you have to evaluate the superintendent, the college president, you attend the meetings, you have to be abreast of laws and issues, you have board information, and lots of emails and other things that come forward to you. Legislation like the one we talked about impacting not only P-12 but the college is important, and this year, you know, along with the capacity issue that we have that's very important for P-12, you're hiring a new college president, which means you're going to be very busy. So, the school board members serving the students in the Dearborn Schools, we have trustee Hussein Barry with five years, we have trustee Fadwa Hamud with two and a half years of service, trustee Mary Lane seventeen years, trustee Mike Mead three years, trustee Celia Nasser was recently appointed this past year, trustee Mary Petlicoff seven years, and trustee Jim Thorpe just over one year of service, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with all of you as superintendent. I want to say that, you know, we know that balancing a life between your job, your regular job, your family, and other commitments, and I did mention there's a diversity on the board because you all have different backgrounds, experience, commitments, personal, home, job, and so many people might think, well, this is a full-time job with a salary. The reality is, it isn't. There is, you don't have offices here at ASC, you come and you're dedicated, and I might add too that when schools shut down for snow or wind or other things, the board keeps going. We have never shut down a board meeting, whether it be an outage during a windstorm, snow, very dedicated group, because you know that some of those agendas and things need to be passed so that we can provide support for our students. You know, the reality is, is the time fulfilling your duties goes far beyond the workday. You put many hours of your own personal time. I've seen it personally. Much of that, you know, done outside the school environment as well. It's not unusually for trustee to spend time talking with neighbors, maybe on a front porch, walking through the community, talking to neighbors, taking a few minutes to chat with a parent, I think it's at a grocery store, running in at different stores. You're never kind of off, you're always on, meeting with community members possibly over a cup of coffee, involved with different groups. So, you know, we appreciate your time, the entire district does. So, as a small token of our appreciation, and to make those informal and impromptu meetings a bit easier, we would like to present each trustee with a special Dearborn Public Schools, and it's got the Students First thermal cup, and there is a gift certificate in there to a local coffee house. And in addition, and I saw that this was kind of popular when you came in before the meeting, we want to make sure you're safe.
You weren't using it appropriately.
We want to make sure you're safe during your travels. So, you do have these ice scrapers with the, again, the Dearborn Schools, that allow you to make sure that your cars are cleaned off safely, and if I see you, I will actually help you out with your car. So, anyways, we really appreciate that. You also have got a certificate, and I hopefully have your certificate that moved with the place, but if I could just ask everyone here, really, the time and dedication, we appreciate the board, we thank them for their hard work and dedication, and again, for me, it's all about collaboration, and I feel like it's been a great collaborative partnership with administration, with me, with the board, you know, with the college president and the new group coming that's going to come in with the college. So, I thank everyone, and so let's show them a big appreciation for the board.
Since you're mentioning duties, one thing that I would like to encourage everybody to pay attention to is our strategic plan, and to make sure that as board, that our responsibility is to make sure that the strategic plan is implemented so that we will be following up regularly on its progress. And the other thing is, John Satkowski, doesn't the college have a one-mil renewal this year?
That's on our discussion for our cabinet meeting.
All right, so that's another issue for this year that will be important for us. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is acknowledgement of donations.
Got Ms. Shannon Peterson will be coming up.
Good evening. Happy New Year. Thank you for your service. All right, donation of one thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars has been offered to Long Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for first grade leveled literacy intervention. A donation of one thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Educational Foundation to be used for technology. A donation of four hundred and fifty dollars has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for analyzed text. A donation of five hundred dollars has been offered to Duval Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for DRA II developmental reading assessments. A donation of four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Chromebooks. A donation of twenty turkeys has been offered to Stout Middle School by Hype Athletics to be distributed to families at Stout Middle School. A donation of a hundred dollars has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Silvio Davis to be used for transportation to Michigan State University for Avid. And lastly, a donation of ten Thanksgiving meals, thirty gloves, and sixty backpacks has been offered to Stout Middle School by Dearborn Christian Fellowship to be distributed to students and families at Stout Middle School. So, thank you to everyone that donated.
Question about the hundred dollars for Michigan State. What is that for?
For students through the Avid program to go visit Michigan State.
What's the Avid program?
I don't know what the letters.
Anybody know?
I can't pull up the letters, but it's a special program at Stout for college readiness. Like, get the students, Stout and Salina focused on college readiness, and Smith, right? Those are the three schools?
Yes, Stout, Smith, and Salina.
That's nice that she's doing it. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item, citizen participation. I have no blue cards. I'll just go on to the next item. Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Policy Committee meeting, December eleventh, 2017, Board Report seventeen dash sixty-five. Regular, P through twelve, meeting, December eleventh, 2017, Board Report seventeen dash sixty-six. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved. Support.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous. Next item, please.
Special reports. First special report is Michigan Association of School Board Annual Leadership Conference Report. Dr. Michael Mead and Mr. Trustee James Thorpe.
Mr. Thorpe and I attended the conference, but Mr. Thorpe has his business, he's working hard, I'm retired, so I got to go to the whole thing. He came in at the very end, and he did hear a motivation speaker telling the story of a student who made progress as a result of a formal education, and that's the way the conference ended. I skipped out on that motivation speaker. All right, so you sent me to this conference because I am supposed to be the advocate for the MAS B conference, where they deal with the Constitution. And basically, they had a subcommittee that reviewed the whole Constitution, and they just kept reiterating and reviewing all of the changes that they made, and everybody who was there, which was over five hundred people, all approved all of the changes that were made in the Constitution. I didn't see anything in there that was substantial that would change the Constitution in any formal, substantial way. The head of the MAS B, and I'm trying to think of his name, and I don't have it written down, so that's stupid, but he started the conference off by reminding all of us that were there that our major responsibility is to create a vision and a mission and a strategic plan for the P through twelve system, and to identify specific goals that are measurable and achievable that will be done in a three-year period because our strategic plan covers three years. So, he spent quite a bit of time talking about that, saying that then you turn the responsibility over to the superintendent, and his staff, and the faculty, and all the staff that work for the school system to implement the strategic plan. So, the first session that I went to was by Steve Demko. He's a CEO of Teach42. I don't know anything about it, but his topic was Innovation Nation: Open the Curiosity Door. And his major theme was to get students to start thinking, to be creative thinkers, to be able to problem solve and to decision, make decisions, and he said the way to do this is not necessarily through technology, but technology is a super tool, a powerful tool, to help students to be engaged in different kinds of games, because the games are very challenging. They force students, once they get to solving one level, then they move to another level. So, they are constantly being challenged in the games, and that creates creativity on the part of the students. One of the things he said that got me, he said, "There are seven principles of learning: individual learning, social learning, children are natural communicators, they can tutor each other, teacher is a guide, learning is not tested by standardized tests, students learn differently according to their interests." And then he said, guess what? "These principles were developed in nineteen forty-six in Italy, and they are still the substance of good pedagogy." So, I thought that was pretty cool. He also said, "If you haven't read the book What's Wrong With Our Schools by Don Wetrick, you're missing something." I still haven't read it, but I'm getting it. Now, another person, by two people, Dr. Forner and Mr. Mark Platt, gave a little presentation on managing controversy, how to govern effectively when a whole bunch of people are mad at the board. And that could happen this year. The board meets in public, this is his theme. The board meets in public, but it is not a public meeting. That's the distinction that he wants to make. And what he means by that is the public has a right to make comments to the board but does not interact with the board. The board needs to hear the comments from its constituents, but deliberations and decisions are board matters, and constituents voted for them to deliberate in transparency and to make the decisions. Therefore, he was suggesting that when people come up to make comments, the idea is that they should make comments to the board to help them with the decisions that they're making, and that they should limit their comments to two to three minutes. And he even suggested that if the board was going to respond, it should be from the superintendent or from the board president. Then, another item was talking about superintendent and the boards, and the superintendent's perspective by Chris Wignett, Executive Director of MAS B. And he said, "Communication and support from the board is encouraged for the superintendent. A clear strategic plan with specific and measurable goals, as approved by the board, is an essential guide for the superintendent. Without this substantial approval of board for the strategic plan, the superintendent has a very difficult time knowing what it is that he or she is supposed to do. The board is not involved in the implementation of the strategic plan, that's the superintendent's job with everybody that he supervises." There are more sessions, but this is the ones that I wanted to pick out for discussion. Now, there's one other, there's one other, and that is Waranko. Is that his name? Who knows the name of the MAS B leader?
Steve Wotrundo.
Wotrundo?
W-O-T-R-U-D.
All right. Well, he, I went to his presentation, and he came up with this that I'm going to share with each one of the board members. This is the Board of Education Governance Standards, and the superintendent has already sent us copies of this, so you can see it, but I have copies tonight that I can distribute to you. But the MAS B, along with a whole bunch of people who work on boards across the state, you know there are over five hundred and forty boards in Michigan? Yeah, it's a huge number. There are seven on each one, so you've got thirty-five hundred people that are doing this work. And so, the MAS B is a major trainer for all of us on the board, and they got together with other board members, and they came up with the Board of Education Governance Standard. The first part of the Governance Standard is all about the behavior of a total board. The second part is the behavior of individual. How do individual members behave? And the last part is a glossary of terms that I encourage every one of us to look at and look at carefully because it gives us, this is the guide that we need to perform our job as board members. Mmm, getting dry. So, I'm going to give you each a copy of this, and I'm hoping that after you read it, we can have a discussion and have a motion to endorse it. This has been endorsed by the Michigan State Board of Education, so, and many other boards have endorsed it. We're trying to get some consistency across the state with how boards are going to behave and how they are going to work on vision, vision, strategic planning, and specific goals. So, that is my report. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I was going to add my suggestions. Dr. Mead and I had talked the morning that I got up to Lansing to see what breakouts we were. to see what breakouts we were going to, make sure we weren't overlapping in any way. First session that I attended was creating a culture of innovation within a district. And what they said is that really, the culture's going to be something that's, it's a long-term project. It's not something that you're going to be able to change in any meaningful way quickly. Again, they said it's not necessarily going to be about technology when they're talking about innovation. They gave examples, and it was a Superintendent and Board President from a small district, I want to say outside of Grand Rapids, that had, I think, between 3,000 and 5,000 students. But they gave some examples, and they used an example of one of the local farmers that farms potatoes. And students in one of the local schools researched all different types of varieties of potatoes and helped the farmer figure out what type of potatoes is he going to grow that year. So, it was great getting a chance to see how the local businesses in that district work with the school district so that the learning can become more experiential. They can see how this is going to impact them in their daily lives. I also attended a session about the school finances, specifically about the taxation, talking about Proposition A and the Headley Amendment. I was hoping it was going to be more of an overview. They chose to go deep in the weeds, which made it a lot tougher to try to stay focused on what they were talking about. Dr. Mead and I also, over the lunch, heard the leadership from MASB talk about what's going on legislatively. They mentioned the House bill, I'm sorry, Senate bill that Dr. Maleko referenced. They were talking about one of the other Senate bills that was passed at the end of last year that we are still waiting to see what the House takes up, and a few other topics that are out there. And as Dr. Mead mentioned, then they closed with an inspirational message. And it was interesting, because this was a person that had been a football player in Southern Florida. He never really cared about school. He just went through school so he could get his scholar, not, his scholarship for college. But then he got injured, and he pretty much had to decide what's he going to do with his life. And he talked about being at a 7-Eleven, and he saw a gentleman walk in with a nice, formal suit. And he said, "Well, what do you do?" He said, "Well, I'm an airline pilot." "Do you make a lot of money doing that?" He said, "Yeah, you can make a lot of money." He was only motivated by money, but he chose to end up going out, and he built an airplane personally. I would never try to do something like that. But he built his own airplane, and he turned it into an educational project where he'll go around the country, working with different school districts. And he will have the school district students come up with ideas for him that will tie back into the core curriculum. So, in one, he will go skydiving and talk all about the atmosphere while you're jumping out of an airplane, a perfectly good airplane at 20-some thousand feet. He'll go scuba diving and talk about marine ecosystems. One of his challenges, actually, they went dumpster diving behind schools to find out how much good food was being thrown out by these schools. And they found out there was a lot more than you would expect, and they actually showed video of them eating the food out of the dumpster, which was disturbing slightly. But it was a great presentation to show kids all the different things they could be learning about in their daily lives. So, it was a great conference to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you both for attending the conference. And as to the Board of Education Governance Standards, maybe that's also something we can have the Policy Committee look at as well.
Go ahead.
And compare it to what we already have in place and before. So.
Next item, please.
Before we go to the next report, Mrs. Shannon Peterson just read our donations. And I just realized, we have one of our donors at the Board meeting here, ready to sneak out. I just wanted to thank Ali Sayed, Dearborn Public School product-
Is that him?
And the founder of Hype Athletics, yes.
Is that him?
So, Ali, thank you for all you've done for our community, our schools, and what you continue to do.
And he chairs the Dearborn Education Foundation.
Yes, that's right.
Very nice, thank you.
So, thank you.
Gives us talent, time, and treasure, so, thank you.